Well, hello everyone. Welcome to a bright Saturday morning in this League of Women Voters Forum for Candidates in Grant for City Council. My name is Mary Santi. I live outside of the city and I will be moderating this forum. Tonight's forum is being taped by Suburban Community Channels and will be available for playback on Channel 16. Check for playback times at www.fctv.org. And we will also provide a link to the replay on our Facebook page for League of Women Voters when it's available. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any candidate or any political party. We sponsor forums like this so you, the voters, can have an opportunity to hear the candidates, hear what they think on the issues that are important to you. Questions are being collected from the audience, so if you need a card, hold your hand, or if you have one, raise it and the ushers will come and pick it up. We also got questions online. So we invited all the candidates to be here as part of the forum and all of the candidates are participating. And they are from the, from my right, your left, Jeff Giefer, Larry Lanou, John Rogg, and Lawrence Sederstrom. The order for speaking will be alphabetical for the opening statement and after that they'll be random. There's timers up in front holding signs. They will give you a 30-second warning and then tell you when your time is up. You may finish the sentence. So we will begin with opening statements. Candidates have a minute and a half for opening statements, so we begin with Jeff Giefer.
Hello. My name is Jeff Giefer. I'd like to say thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and thanks to you, the citizens of Grant, for joining us on this Saturday. Growing up, I lived in rural southern Minnesota and I worked on my grandparents' farm. My wife grew up in the area and when we married, we moved to Grant to get back to our rural roots. I am running for Grant City Council because I want to protect and preserve the quality of life in our community. If we are not careful with how we manage and plan for Grant by keeping taxes low and limiting development, we risk losing the reasons why we enjoy living here. This is why I joined the City of Grant Planning Commission in 2016. I will vote against any measure bringing unnecessary public and water and sewer to Grant. I will work to maintain a conservative budget. I will listen to you and I'll use what you tell me to guide me. The last 20 years, I've worked at General Mills as an IT analyst, working on projects collaborative with people all around the world, people with different beliefs and skillsets. We did not always agree, but we got our jobs done without interrupting each other, tearing each other down, or suing each other. Unfortunately, our city council meetings have deteriorated to the point where this behavior is the norm. This behavior has to stop. It's time for fresh new faces in the city council and putting the welfare of the citizens first. As a council member, I will work hard, work cooperatively, and listen to you. Thank you.
Thank you now, Larry Lanou.
Okay, good morning. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters and the City of Mottamidai for hosting this forum. Both Lauren and I requested that this forum be held in the City of Grant where we pay our taxes. Many of not, may not be aware, but we're not allowed to, we would not have been allowed to use this facility, or our city facility, as our city council has denied the use of our town hall, forbidding both 4-H and any other citizens groups from its use. That's why we're meeting here today. One need only to look at the upkeep of the 4-H gardens, a lack of respect shown to its leaders of 55 years, Joyce Wheeler, to understand why our city is failing. Running for city council again after searching for a candidate that will stand up for the rights of the citizens that are incrementally being taken away. I'm sorry to say that most that would consider this position refuse to serve knowing they'd have to serve with the, sitting next to the council majority for the next two years. Some of these rights have been taken away, the right to assemble in our town hall and the right to speak freely at our council and planning commission without the threat of arrest if the majority does not approve of your content. I've denied the right to use the city hall to organize a search team, emergency response team, formation of a volunteer committee to review our failing roads, organize flooding homes with the citizens of Grant, and organize a steering committee for the comprehensive plan. Our grandfather rights are being denied, our rights to our home occupation being restricted, our right to farm at Grant being put in a different direction, and we're not being allowed to participate.
Thank you. John Rogg.
Good morning and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and thank you to everyone in the audience who are taking the time this morning to hear about what's important to the future of Grant. My name is John Rogg and I'm running for Grant City Council. I've been a resident of Grant for over 11 years and I'm currently serving as chairman of the planning commission. When the planning commission resumed sessions over two years ago, I decided to volunteer to help the city I love. Why did I decide to run for city council? In the planning commission, I've had the opportunity to hear from citizens as to what's important to them. I've also had to make sure we adhere to the rules when we run the meetings. When I realized what the city council does, I wanted to continue to help the city that I love in a different capacity. So I know, or since I know how to help Grant and the planning commission, I can also help Grant on the city council. If you're wondering what I'd do as a city council member, first, I would work constructively and respectfully with other city council members. A good debate based on the issues is never a bad thing. Second, I would try to solve the inequity of the gas tax that we all pay at the pumps while not getting a dime for road repairs and replacement from the state. To get that money would require us to grow to 5,000 residents. The census is in two years and if we do grow, that would be, that would be able to help our budget tremendously. Third, I would review the budget line by line to see if there's any waste that could be reviewed and potentially removed to keep our taxes low while maintaining services to all the citizens of Grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence Sederstrom.
Thank you and thank you for everyone being here. Thanks to the League of Women Voters. I want to state I've been on the planning commission, I've been a cable commissioner, four years in the council, I've attended many watershed meetings, and I am a charter member of the Grant Heritage Council. I have several concerns for the future of Grant. First of all, we have to keep our wells safe. Some of you may or may not know of the fiasco of the man dumping 300 hydrovac trucks. Hydrovac trucks are used to suck up waste and also do sewer repair. I worked with Larry and we had the MPCA shut them down. However, the council majority wouldn't amend the ordinance. Okay, the other thing we need to do is there's no use of town hall and they don't even put public comment on. So if there's a robbery in 110th Street, it would be nice if someone could share and say, hey, watch out. The third, comprehensive plan has no public input and there's leapfrog development can open us up to sewer and water. And we've seen flubs along. They've allowed a hockey rink, they've allowed a change the ordinance to allow for a supper club. This is problematic. And the last thing that I think is very serious is the majority uses the staff to retaliate against them, using lawsuits, inspections to intimidate those who oppose them, including examples of this are Hools, the Gast House, Michael's Construction, Joyce Wheeler, and others. Joyce was sent a letter by the city attorney because she had a hay rack in her pasture with a couple of signs on it and they said she had a condition, she had an artistic grouping and she needed to get a conditional use permit. That was ridiculous.
Thank you. So we'll now turn to questions you've submitted, but keep submitting them as we go along and they'll be answered in a random order. The first to answer this will be Larry Lanou. What unique value will you bring to the city if you are elected?
Well, I think the value is the same one I've been showing right along. I will stand up for the citizens' right, the right to farm in our community, the right to speak at a council without the threat of being arrested. Currently, we've restricted our public input and our public hearings. I got elected in 2014 on November 2nd. On November 6th, our city developed a policy and procedures to limit our participation as minority members. And so I will stand up for the rights of the citizens that are afraid to stand up and speak to our city council members because they are afraid that they will be brought legal action against them.
Thank you. La-
I would like to rebut that.
Well, after everyone has answered, then everyone can have a chance to give a rebuttal. Is that all right for everyone? Lawrence Sederstrom.
Unique value, I have a lot of experience like a planning commission, a cable commission. I see a lot what's going on. I've worked very diligently. For example, three months in a row, I wrote an ordinance change to virtually outlaw hydrovac dumping. The 32-145 says there can be no wastewater discharge within 3,000 feet of a well. I live across the street from that place, so I know exactly what's happening. They brought 300 trucks, Lord knows what are in them. And what, what we need to do is I need to continue my work, hopefully, to get some of these things changed to keep the Grants' wells safe.
Thank you. Jeff Giefer.
Yep. I want to keep Grant the same and I do not believe we need any major changes, which is why I joined the planning commission in 2016. I want to work with the other council members and not against them to protect our scenic country of Grant and keeping the comprehensive plan the same and following our current ordinances. I will work with other council members to keep public sewer and water out of Grant other than what is needed for our schools and work to keep our taxes low. I'll help keep Grant the community we love. I'll work hard, work cooperatively, and listen to the citizens of Grant.
Thank you. John Rogg.
Thank you. Unique, unique value that I will bring. I'm an engineer and as part of the planning commission, the chairman, I've learned that when you look at the ordinances, when you see people bring issues in front of you, you have to use the ordinances and leave emotion out of it. So you have to look at what people want, look at the ordinances, and it's pretty clear what, what you can and can't do according to Grant. So for example, when people say that, you know, you know, they want to bring water and sewer into Grant, that's, that's not going to happen. It's just a matter of looking at what the ordinances say and what the comprehensive plan says and following those rules. It's as simple as that. So that's the unique value that I bring. Just follow the rules.
Okay, now rebuttals, anyone?
I would like to rebut some of the comments that Mr. Lanou said. He talked about people being afraid of the city council. I think if anyone would be afraid, they'd be afraid of being sued by Larry. Larry's had numerous lawsuits against people that are trying to work for the city. Most recently, had a federal lawsuit that was thrown out with extreme prejudice. He's also in the process of suing people for a frivolous open meeting violation. So those are the kind of things that people should be scared about.
Any further rebuttals? John Rogg.
You know, I know firsthand of being sued by Larry for silly things, like Jeff said, open meeting violation. And, you know, when you're on the planning commission and you know somebody and you're saying hi to them and shaking their hand, and Larry comes in and takes a picture of you and sues you because there's four people in the room and I'm just saying hi to somebody, that's kind of silly. And so if anybody is, should be afraid, it's four more years of that kind of behavior.
Larry.
Yeah, I'd like to rebut both of these gentlemen. Now, this gentleman, there was a, at the planning commission, they were up on the screen, so was the document that they were talking about earlier this evening. This happened about 20 minutes after the meeting had left. And if you go to the court documents and you'll see that most of the lawsuits started in the City of Grant were initiated by Mr. Huber and his actions. Yes, I have countersued in my own defense, that's what you do in a legal lawsuit. And yes, I have taken the court to stop open meeting violations going on in our city. It happens routinely and they can call it frivolous. It's still being in court, being decided. Folks, I'm standing up for your rights and I'm not afraid to stand up for those that will take them away.
Thank you.
Okay, I also would, like I had pointed out earlier, Joyce Wheeler, who's caught for, had 4-H for 50 years, had a wagon in her pasture with two signs on it. She received a letter from the city attorney saying she needed to get a conditional use permit for her artistic grouping. And like the ones I'd named earlier, those people have been intimidated by city, the majority. Okay, we don't even know what happens. Half the time, we can't get anything on the agenda, but all of a sudden, gee whiz, there's a full-blown proposal there to be voted on. It's crazy. We can't take things off the content agenda like the $107,000 contract and it's state law says contracts over $100,000 must have a second bid with them. They violate that stuff all the time. There's all the backdoor deals. Larry and I don't get a chance to see anything until, hopefully, it's in the packet and some things aren't in the packet and they just bring it up. So you guys, it's, it's a mess, folks.
Thank you. This next question kind of drills down on the first one. Can you please describe how you intend to bring objective view, transparency, and a collaborative commitment to our frequently divided Grant Council? How you intend to bring this? Start with John Rogg.
Okay, so you talked about bringing an objective view. As I said before, in the, in the planning commission, you just follow the rules. I'm very objective. As an engineer, you have to be objective. You look at the data, you look at what's presented, and you make decisions based on the ordinances. You make decisions based on what the comprehensive plan says. You know, I'm not looking to rewrite anything. You follow the rules that are there. There is a process to go through to change things, but when you have things in front of you, you follow the rules. Simple as that. Thank you.
Larry Lanou.
High transparency. I'll just give, bring you an example. This is part of a, I guess it would be called a PowerPoint program presented at the Mottamidai City Council Meeting on September 18th for the Rank II Hockey Arena. At that point, the planning commissioner for the City of Mottamidai and Mr. Rogoszewski said that the ice arena would be served by Grant City and Water. He has also said he has gotten approval, it was on a PowerPoint and highlighted by Mr. Rogg, Mr. Giefer, Mr. Helander, Mr. Tufti, and by our city council, highlighted by Tom Carr, Jeff Huber, and Dennis Kopp. This thing hasn't been in front of the planning commission yet for discussion or public hearing, and yet they're giving its approval for this. And, and they're also saying there's no other possible site available. So transparency, I want to stop open meeting violations and decision-making that's being done behind closed doors, brought to our city council meeting and approved, and resolutions being written without prior discussion.
Thank you. Lawrence Sederstrom.
Well, I've been working at this the whole time. Matter of fact, April of last year, I asked the mayor, I shouted into the microphone and I said, "Mayor, are you going to allow me to participate in next month's meeting?" I'm frequently ignored. I've brought full-blown the change to the 32-145 three times, they wouldn't even look at it. Our drinking water needs to be protected. I've been brought numbers of things forward. Matter of fact, McUsick Road with last engineer Phil Olson, I had, he worked a proposal up to fix McUsick Road for $130,000 in overlay, it would last 10 years. They're spending $25,000 a year on it. It's 250 grand by the time they get done and they still have junk.
Thank you. Any rebuttals?
I haven't had a chance to answer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Jeff.
So, I agree with what John said. I mean, we need to be objective and follow the rules and participate in civil reasonable debates. People have differences of opinion. You can have differences of opinion, but you should be able to work things out without resorting to all this nonsense. As far as some of the statements that Larry said, the agendas are set in advance. If they, they have plenty of opportunity, and I go to these, the city meetings every time, they have plenty of opportunity to provide what they want on the agenda, but they refuse. They play their games, they wait till the last minute, and they try to throw something in and say, oh, there's a big conspiracy that, that I'm not being able to, to make my opinions heard. As far as approval of the hockey rink, that's absurd, the saying that we, we would try to approve the hockey rink. We have no power to prove it as individuals. That has to go through the planning commission and the, and the city council. There's, it's absurd to think that we would try to, as individuals, provide approval for the hockey rink.
Okay, now rebuttals.
Yeah, I don't know what Larry's talking about. I have no idea. This hasn't come before the planning commission since I've been there. So I don't know what he's talking about, that it's come before the planning commission or individuals, because that doesn't happen. So again, just, just he's trying to make you believe things that aren't true.
Lawrence Sederstrom.
Okay, I, when Mr. Giefer said that I don't bring things forward, that is not true. November, December, and January, I had the definition of hydrovac written out and the amendment, and it was in the packet, three months in a row. And I believe, if I can remember the quote from Mr. Carr, he said, "Oh, that's above our pay grade." I'm sorry. Keeping our drinking water safe is not above anybody's pay grade when it comes to dealing with wastewater. We're all on wells. We already have sewer and water into the, into the school. I don't want to see it go any further. Plus, they keep pushing the envelope. They allow houses to be built in divisions that shouldn't be, like on Keswick, the third house, the third one back. That should have never been built there. But we have to follow the rules and these guys always aren't, things just magically appear, like the hockey arena. It wasn't supposed to be. 100 by 3, 300-foot hockey arena up on a farm? They said, "Oh, withdraw your CUP and build it anyway, horse barns are big." Well, I'm sorry, that isn't agricultural.
Thank you. Over here, Larry Lanou.
I'd like to rebut their statement. He says, "How did that get on there?" These are the pages, go to the Mottamidai City Council Meeting, September 18th, look at the PowerPoint program on it for the Rank II Hockey Arena. They're highlighted, the persons that have already approved the hockey arena. It says they're going to use sewer and water from the City of Grant. As far as me putting stuff on the agenda item, I come well-prepared, send the stuff into the city clerk beforehand, but it takes, according to the city's policies and procedures, it takes a majority vote from the city council members to add something. So if I add something to an agenda on an issue that has come up since the last council meeting, it can't be done. I prepared good documentation. Our city clerk is not accurate in saying that I didn't prepare it. I will provide you with the emails. And in fact, it's part of the lawsuit that we're trying to stop abusive, the consent agenda and abuse of setting agenda.
Jeff?
I would like to rebut. So first of all, Larry, you're bringing up the City of Mottamidai, does, we're, we're talking Grant here. So all that stuff about the City of Mottamidai Council really doesn't apply here.
The hockey rink is going in Grant.
Second, so regarding Lauren's comment about what Tom Carr supposedly said about water, well, everyone wants safe water to drink. That's, that's silly to say that, suggest that someone wouldn't want that. And I think you're taking it out of context. I think what Tom was saying is that there are other organizations that are responsible for ensuring safe water. It's outside of the, the City of Grant's responsibility to ensure that there's safe water. The MPCA, there's plenty of-
Excuse me, we've all had one rebuttal and now we'll move on to the next question, which shifts gears a little bit. And the first to answer is Lawrence Sederstrom. Do you think that Grant has excessive legal fees?
Well, I would agree with that. I know what Larry went through. He's been here for 30 years. He had grandfather rights, he's had a horse farm for 30 years, and they went after him for getting a conditional use permit. I saw the 1983 change when they went, changed the rules and they said anyone that was in, in any agricultural organization that was in operation in 1981 was grandfathered in, would be allowed to be used. The, the council majority came after them and they spent $60,000 or $70,000 forcing him to get a conditional use permit when he'd been here for 30-some years and he was grandfathered in. And then it's just ridiculous and they're saying, "We're doing it?" Guess again. You look at the money that's been expended and a majority has been from those people trying to intimidate the minority and the minorities supporters.
Thank you. Jeff Giefer.
So yeah, first of all, the legal fees, most of the legal fees that we're encountering is because of Mr. Sederstrom and Mr. Lanou. As far as the CUP, Larry was asked several times to get a CUP and because he did not, he refused to, which I don't understand what's the big deal of applying for a CUP when he was asked. So that incurred the city $40,000 just for that in legal fees alone. When he finally did get a CUP in front of it, it passed, there's no problem. But the fact that he didn't do it is just typical disruptive behavior by, by Larry.
Okay, Larry Lanou, you're next.
Oh boy, I can handle this one. Okay, high legal fees. Mr. Huber threatened me with center within two minutes of being sworn in, took me to court over center. The district court had proven I was denied my due process, my conditional use permit. He tried to have my wife and I, well, my wife incarcerated indefinitely. He asked for $40,000 in legal fees. The judge threw that out, folks, it's in the documents. So yes, we do have high legal fees. I've got a picture here if you'd like to. It's a picture of a little three-by-three gopher sign. Joyce Wheeler had it in her yard. The city went after her threat and her legal because she had a three-by-three gopher sign. Go to Axle, there's 20 yards signs out there. Our city's arbitrary and capricious, they've lost in court before on that, and they're going to continue using it, losing as long as they do not apply their zoning and their ordinances fairly and evenly to all citizens of Grant.
Thank you. John Rogg.
So, yes, our legal fees are too high and I can't, you know, I know that in the four years that our esteemed people have been on the city council, the legal fees are in about $170,000 range for four years, for taxpayer money. But I don't know, you know, this is a he said, she said, it's always going to be that way. But I do know when I'm in the planning commission, in the planning commission rules, it says city council, current city council members may observe public hearings held at the planning commission meetings, but shall not comment during meeting or public hearings. Any comments by a city council member that was within 1,320 feet of the property, you know, they may submit their questions. They constantly want to talk at planning commission meetings and public comments. So if they don't follow those rules, then how can we believe them on anything else?
Comment?
Okay, rebuttals?
Yes, Mr. Giefer. It's obviously, it's beyond the copious of your diminutive comprehension to understand what grandfather rights are. A grandfather right is, if you've moved here before the, the document changes and you become a city, you have the right to exercise that because you were here way before the rules changed. So Mr. Lanou has been here for 38 years, he has 30 acres, he's got, puts horses on there, so he is quote-unquote grandfathered in. Coming after him was nothing but a witch hunt and a retribution, absolutely, because that's what grandfather rights are. If you, ugh. Can't believe it.
Any further?
I would like to rebut. I really want to know, actually, I don't, I can tell you, there is, Larry did not suffer any harm from being asked to comply with a CUP, nothing. And as far as the, the comments about Mr. Huber, so Mr. Huber's not running for city council, he's already mayor. I think he made it very clear that you have a, a personal vendetta against Mr. Huber and that's the basis behind all your frivolous lawsuits. And this is why you need to be replaced on the city council.
Larry Lanou.
Yeah, Mr. Rogg, he's correct. I did come to a recent planning commission meeting and I sat in there and they had some good information going on and I stood up to speak. If it's a public hearing, I did not give up my right to speak. When our city, two days after being elected, produces policies and procedures without council input, two days after being elected, to restrict our participation, I did not give up my right as a citizen of Grant to speak at a public hearing. Mr. Rogg denied my right and that is why you're being in court, is because they do not follow statute, just as they denied the use of the city hall. Why do you think when they allowed the Gateway Trail Association and Woodland Acres use of that building? Laurie Swanson said it was illegal. They wrote the policy in there and now they've just changed it now. In fact, they've redone and amended our policy and procedures six times to restrict our participation.
Thank you. John Rogg.
I'll rebut. City of Grant, rules, that's what I cited. Current city council members may not speak at public comments in the planning commission. Period. Like I said, engineer, follow the rules. These gentlemen don't. They both spoke at that meeting.
No, I did not.
No, I did not.
You, you tried.
Well, that didn't-
Same. You came up and you wanted to speak and I said, "Please step aside."
And I did.
Please do not answer when someone's turned.
Anyhow, anyhow, just follow the rules, that's all I'm saying.
We'll move on to the next question and the first to answer is John Rogg. Do you want Grant Roads blacktopped and all residents share the cost?
It's a good question. No, our current system of- No, our current system of allowing the residents to, to vote if they want the road blacktopped and have it put in their taxes, or in their property taxes, is a great thing. I don't want our taxes raised. You know, why would we raise taxes for everybody so one road can be paved that maybe you don't use? So, no, I wouldn't do that, and I wouldn't raise taxes for something like that. We want to keep our taxes low, let the system work as, as it currently works, and I think it works fine.
Larry Lanu.
Yes, I do believe our blacktop roads. We need a perpetual road maintenance program that applies to hard surface and gravel. Mr. Rog, he doesn't believe it because he didn't go through the process. He paved his own road a quarter mile up to his house without going through the process. He stepped across that line. He doesn't follow our guidelines. Go to the blacktop road, folks. When you go to these meetings, you're putting neighbor against neighbor. You've got retired people that can't afford the deals, our, our blacktop roads. We use bonding authority. We don't need to do it. The maintenance costs alone will save the cost of that road. It's time we step up and act like a city. Many of these people get out, Mr. Rog gets out, and he drives on other roads. He drives on county roads, state roads, and the gravel roads. No, it's time we all share in our road system. In fact, I don't know what else we're paying our taxes for. That's the only infrastructure we have, and it's time to step up.
Thank you. Lauren Sederstrom.
Okay. I do not believe we should pave all our roads. I repeat that. However, there's some equity issues. For example, I'll take Woodland Acres', but I live down the road from there. There's seventy residents there, okay? They have their own roads, but they all use Jolier to get out of there. That road is ridiculous. There is a strip, three hundred foot strip of pavement in front of the Mr. Hubers and Mr. Carr's house that's been in place for almost ten years. There isn't a chip in it. I advocated the same thing, came up with a proposal to fix McHusick Road for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and in the long run, saving us a hundred and twenty grand over ten years, and they wouldn't even consider it. We need to fix our main artery so our citizens can get in and out of there, and I don't know how we're going to do it. We have to come up with, with an aspect because it doesn't make sense for twelve people to pay for the artery when there's seventy people living off it.
Jeff Keifer.
So first of all, I'd like to just quickly address Larry's thing about bonding. So do you think bonding means free money? That money's still going to have to be coming out of our pockets. And as far as equal money set aside to roads, that we do have a perpetual road maintenance plan that includes equal amount of money for the various roads. Our current road policy works. We're able to maintain our roads in a very cost-effective manner while allowing citizens to have input in the types of roads they want. For example, the special road projects where they're initiated by seventy-five percent of the citizens in the neighborhood, and if they want to blacktop the road, then they can. Unfortunately, though, as a city of less than five thousand residents, we do not qualify for state gas tax money. I met with our state rep, Kathy Lomer, and a few other citizens, and she is going to try to take that up and make it more equitable for smaller cities like Grant to get more of that gas tax money. If we have that, then we will be able to really improve our roads.
All right. Any rebuttals here? John Rog.
I don't know where Larry is getting his information. Again, he just tries to lie. I went through the process. The city council voted on it, and it was gone, and it went through the city engineers. I don't know where Larry's saying, "I do it on my own and don't follow the rules." That's impossible. So Larry, stop lying, please. Don't, don't, don't do this to the citizens of Grant, please.
And let's, let's keep personal attacks out of this discussion. Thank you. Lawrence Sederstrom wants to rebut.
Yes, this road policy doesn't work. Look at Jolier Avenue. We're paying fifty-three cents out of every dollar for the schools. I proposed that we raise it about twenty-five dollars for residents to kick into a fund to fix some of the main arteries. Look at McHusick, look at Jolier, look at Kimbrough. They're falling apart. And all we're doing is we're putting patching. It's costing us more to put patches continually on the roads than it would be to fix them, right? I don't want to see us spend a lot of money, but what I'm saying, we could use, you know, patching the same road over and over. You're paying basically for labor because you have to send a crew out there. There's travel time. They have to go out there and fix it, patch it, and you still have a crummy road. If they would do like they did in front of Mr. Carr's and Mr. Huber's house, just put a brief overlay, that drive by there, it's beautiful. It's lasted for almost ten years, and there isn't a chip in it. We can do it economically. We just have to get off our butts and do it.
Thank you. Jeff Greeter.
Mr. Sederstrom talks about a plan. I have not, I have been to almost every city council meeting, and he can sit here and say, like, "We need to do this." Well, what has he been doing the last four years? I've not seen him bring forth any, any kind of plan that would make sense with any financial, you know, attributes tied to it. So...
I just outlined it.
Well, you haven't said it in the, you haven't brought it to the city council.
Phil Olson, the engineer, did.
You have already rebutted. Larry Lanu.
Okay. Mr. Keifer, you asked me, "Is bonding money free?" No, it isn't. Obvious it isn't. It's a, it's a source of income you fund over a period of time, just like the mortgage on your house. You say, "Have we brought it forward?" Yes, I've denied the right to form a road committee in use of the town hall to put together a steering committee to develop a comprehensive road committee. I've been down to the League of Minnesota Cities. I have lobbied down there personally myself for state aid for local roads. That is why the city of Grant received over sixty thousand dollars in there. In fact, I brought the resolution into the city office, and for doing that, a city, Washington County Sheriff showed up because I came to the city office and brought a resolution from the League of Minnesota Cities, which netted our city over sixty thousand dollars and is a continuing program. Now, Mr. Huber's tried to take credit for that, but go down to the League of Minnesota Cities, see, he brought in the resolution. You see, I've been down there, and yes, I have been down to the Capitol, met with both Karen Housley and Representative Lomer several times in addressing this issue. Thank you.
We'll turn to another question, and it will begin with Jeff Keifer. Should solar gardens be permitted in Grant?
Well, there's a lot of gray area around how solar community, excuse, not community solar gardens, I would call them commercial solar operations. There's a lot of gray area in how that would fit into our current comp plan. So as I can say, as a council member, I would be very diligent in looking at the facts and being objective in, in making sure that our comp plan is adhered to when, when talking about community or corporate solar operations.
Thank you. Lawrence Sederstrom.
Solar gardens. It went through the planning commission, six to one, the ordinance, but when it came to the city council, it was, the solar gardens were bordered down. Why? Because the person proposing it was Joyce Wielander. I saw the plan. It was going to be twenty acres. The small solar garden was going to be surrounded completely by shrubs, trees, and brushes on eight acres. The other twenty-two acres was going to be seeded for pollinators. That something's very important. We have to maintain our pollinator population. I farm. I know. It's important to have pollinators. And again, this is another example of striking out against someone because they didn't get supported. I think, and there's, by the way, there's only three places in Grant that they could have one of these solar gardens, the larger ones, and Joyce Wielander's one of it. So it's, it's, it's just ridiculous that they would, when it went through the planning commission, that they would strike that part out at the city council.
Larry Lanu.
Yes, I believe it is. Our comprehensive plan allows it. It's a part of a right to farm. The mayor put a moratorium once they learned that Joyce Wielander was interested in it. We have a beekeeper in our audience today. I think it would serve our community fine to have that solar garden out there. Our city council denied that application without any findings of fact. That puts our city in jeopardy of the legal. Because right now, I've been getting calls from the organization that represents that, and Commissioner Fran Myron also recommended that they go after the city because they did not give any findings of fact for the denial of that application. It is your right to farm. It isn't part of our comprehensive plan to keep Grant rural. Simply, Mr. Rog says, when she came out there, she says, "Is Grant going to benefit from this?" And the truth of the matter is, it's not whether Grant benefits. Joyce had the ability to retire on that income. Thank you.
John Rog.
So the misnomer, "It's not a solar garden. It is a commercial solar generating plant." When you have that many solar panels, it's a commercial, and it is commercial because that goes into the grid, so now it's commercial. So it's a commercial solar generating plant. Let's call it what it is. It's got nothing to do with gardens. We have a commercial district in Grant, and, you know, you could put a commercial solar generating plant in the commercial district that we currently have. You know, we have in agriculture, we have a very nice way of living in Grant, and I don't think seeing this many solar panels is going to help anybody. Certainly isn't going to help the people of Grant. And this is why people from other cities want it here, because we have this much land. But our job is not to provide this, these people abilities to do this. You know, Joyce, you could say, "Joyce, she could do horse farms. She could do other things." Solar, commercial solar generating plants don't have a place in Grant.
Thank you.
Rebuttal?
Rebuttals.
Okay. I'm sure most of you people are familiar with the concept of selective perception. This is not a major solar garden. It's a minor solar garden. It would be completely encased. The other thing that's very interesting, he's babbling about commercial. Two, three years ago, the city council passed an ordinance that they could put supper clubs on county roads, and we almost had one in Manning and Sixty-second. Why don't we just take a big stick and start poking the Met Council and see if we can wake them up and, you know, because water and sewer was across the road? You know, the same thing with the hockey arena. They said, "Oh, you take away your CUP. You don't need a CUP for a hockey arena. Those horse farms have big places." Well, horse farms are agricultural. Hockey arenas are. It goes against our comp plan, and they've been doing things like the hockey arena, the supper clubs against the comp plan, and gee whiz, nobody seems to notice or care. I want to keep Grant rural. I farm. I've got forty-three acres. I'm an active farmer. I don't want to see water and sewer because it would bankrupt me.
Thank you. Other rebuttals?
Yes.
Larry Lanu.
Okay, yes, getting back to your solar farm. Both Ritter, Tom Carr, Jeff Huber, and Mr. Rog said they all prefer houses over solar farms, and they would rather see housing development. They've got one going across the road. If you keep putting housing development on housing development, you will bring in Met Council public sewer and water, which is written and against our comprehensive plan. Yes, solar farming would benefit our community, and it does not require sewer and water. It has no adverse impact on our city. And Mr. Rog says he's concerned that Joyce will make money. Well, guess what? She has a right to farm. She has a right to retire, and I support her right. I also support her coming back to the city council and revisiting this and that they refund her money for the, another thirty-four hundred dollars for that application that they're charging her again.
Mr. Keifer.
I think it's ridiculous to suggest that there's a personal vendetta against an applicant. And I know the members of the council. That's just ridiculous to suggest that. So that, the kind of vitriol and, and personal attacks is just, is just what's killing us right now. We've got to get away from that. And it's interesting that Mr. Lanu mentions the Met Council when about seven days after he was elected to the city council, he applied to be on the Met Council. You've got to ask yourself, "Well, why is that? Does he really want to keep city and water sewer out of Grant, or does he have some other interests in mind?"
Mr. Rog? All right. This next question goes first to Lawrence Sederstrom. Do you support any public sewer and water from Met Council?
Absolutely not. I would be very happy to see the school district given back to Madam Eidei, so we don't have it. We do have sewer and water in Grant. It goes to the high school. It goes, and now they're proposing the, on the ice rink, the hockey rink. What's really interesting about that whole concept is there is a restrictive covenant in the deed conveyed by wastewater management that nothing can ever be built on the municipal waste dump site. They, they already broke through the top and the bottom, and they found it was thirty feet deep, not twenty. They're having issues at Wildwood School. There's already fifty-three children that have been taken out because they were having headaches and nosebleeds, and two teachers have cancer. We have some serious concerns. There's also another three M municipal waste dump across the street, and I've talked with the MPC. I actually talked with the office in Chicago and trying to get me information. But in eighty-seven, they didn't, they didn't check for PFCs. They didn't have the tests. So there's a lot of stuff going on around here we need to be concerned about.
Thank you. Jeff Keifer.
Yeah, so I am against bringing any public sewer or water into Grant other than what is necessary for our schools. And unlike Mr. Sederstrom, I do not believe that we need to annex part of our city to Madam Eidei. So that, I'm against any annexation, and I don't, I mean, that's why we became a city in the first place, is to prevent annexation. As far as the, the school and, and toxic waste dumps and this and that, I mean, that's ridiculous. There's no higher incidence of cancer. It's actually the lower incidence of cancer in that community than, than the rest of the state. And the MPC and all the, you know, applicable government organizations have, have signed off on that, and they're doing continued testing. So that's a hyperbole to say that.
Thank you. John Rog.
Yes, I would not support public sewer and water going into Grant. Obviously, the high school in Wildwood already have it because they are schools, but no extensions, nothing, nothing across the street, nowhere should there be any more sewer and water. And if I'm city council, I wouldn't allow it.
Thank you. Larry Lanu.
All right, Mr. Keifer, you did say I signed up for Met Council for the committee. If you're on the city council, the first thing they do is they send you an application if you'd be interested. Yes, that's where you find out where change is happening. I volunteered to sit on a committee there. I also volunteered for a committee for three M dump sites to address the dump sites that's within three tenths of a mile of Wildwood Elementary School. You say there are no conditions out there and that the government's done. If you read the environmental assessment report, and I know I've only got a minute to do it, but it states that there's a three M dump site within two mi, or three mi, three tenths of a mile of that site, that there's an inherent rest of the construction workers, that there'll be inherent rest of the kids in there. Our city wrote a resolution saying we don't need an environmental impact, and they don't have that ability because the local governing unit happens to be the Rice Creek Watershed. Our city didn't have the right to write that resolution.
Rebuttals?
I would like to rebut. The only involvement that a city of Grant had in that was the grading permits. That's it. So I don't know what this other stuff you're talking about is. It's nonsense.
Lawrence Sederstrom.
Okay. In regard to testing, I recently attended, I go to several workshops at the Watershed districts. I attended a workshop at Rice Creek. Jenny Yingling from the Minnesota Department of Health submitted the testing for the environmental assessment worksheet. They were from 2011. They're not following their conditional use permit. There's supposed to be wells on the school ground, and they're supposed to be tested every other year. To my knowledge, it's only been tested once in that since 2011. We have some problems, folks, here. It's kind of like the blind leading, the deaf dumb, and stupid.
Any further rebuttals?
No, I've only spoken.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I thank you. Yes, Mr. Keifer, if you wrote the environmental EAW, and it was a fifteen-hundred-page document, I doubt that you did read it. But some of the highlights on it, once it states that the, states that the proposed ring-two-site building on top of a former dump creates inherent environmental concerns for site workers and the public during construction of the facility and for future building occupants. It is the duty of the city councilman to protect the health, safety, and welfare, and It is the duty of the city councilmen to protect the health, safety, and welfare, and that includes the kids that are coming in that future building. And our city went, and, uh, they knew all this beforehand. Uh, our city had a council majority, and all they have to do is show up with the school district. They knew they'd get it voted. We traded in a good planning, uh, commission for a, a new planner, that, a boutique planner that would fit this school on a dump site. And so, I, I'm here to tell you, the documents in that EAW is a 1,500-page document. If you've read it or you understand how it was proposed, our city ordered it. And yes, we do have concerns, but we don't have the right to, uh, uh, rely a environmental impact statement. Are you running a meeting, Jeff?
Thank you. John Rog, do you have a rebuttal?
I do not.
All right. Next question goes first to Larry Lanou. Did you support the charter commission? And do you think a charter would benefit the City of Grant?
Absolutely. I sat on that charter commission. Uh, our mayor petitioned it, said it would be beneficial to the city. One of the things that it would have done, would have said it would record and audio visual the meetings in its entirety. Citizens would be allowed to use city-owned facilities. The, the city, uh, shall not allow any form of public sewer. Uh, in fact, it, it prohibited putting any public sewer in two places in the charter. But the per- people opposing it, uh, were allowed to lie and mislead the citizens of Grant. This would have stopped Met Council. Uh, folks, it would have been the best thing for your city. It would have, it addressed the road issues. It was a good document, it should be revisited, uh, and, uh, I, I wish the citizens of Grant would have read the document and understood it before they voted.
Thank you. John Rog.
Uh, this was voted on by the citizens of Grant. I trust them and their, uh, ability to read things, and they voted on it, and it was, uh, rejected. That's all you have to say.
Jeff Giefer.
Um, I was, um, in, in one way, I was very thankful for the, the charter commission that it came up, um, because it's what got me involved in learning more about my community, what was going on. When I saw that, I had a lot of questions, and I asked around, and when I got the answer I was looking for, I decided it was not the best thing for us. There's no, there's no reason to have another layer of government, um, for a city of our size. And, um, it got voted down, and I was thankful for that.
Lauren Sederstrom.
Well, I was familiar with it because I taped them so, so they'd be able to go on, uh, Channel 16. I was in that little room in there. And we had two prominent attorneys on the charter commission. And what I got from them, Mr. Rogoshevsky and Mr. Dorsey, that the charter would have given Grant a stronger foothold against the Met Council. And so, from my perspective, anything that we can do to keep the Met Council out of the City of Grant, I'm absolutely for. I mean, we have to keep it out there. Uh, let's face it, I'm biased. I've got 43 acres, I got roads on three sides. It would decimate me. I'd become an instant, instantly bankrupt. So, I don't want to see Grant sewer and water come in, but I would like to see so, some, the, the process smooth out.
Rebutts? Larry Lanou.
Uh, I do have the resolution for the charter. It says that, uh, and, and this was drafted by our, our, our mayor. It says, "The charter-form of government provide the city with greater flexibility to make changes, uh, and address the needs and concerns of the residents. A charter may allow the city to operate more efficiently with greater response to the needs of the residents. The City of Grant desires to have a charter commission appointed by the district court." The dean's in the best entrance city to petition the district court, and it shall consist of nine members. Uh, then, Resolution 2011 states that all five of the council members should be on the charter, and he named five names also to be sitting on there. I petitioned the district court to allow all citizens of Grant apply for that position. Uh, when the mayor did not get his nine positions out of the ten that he submitted, he denied the right of the charter commission, which he petitioned the court to become, the right to meet in our own city hall. The charter commission was held here, and so, they did that in, in a misleading, uh...
Thank you. Any further rebuttal?
Rebuttal?
Jeff Giefer.
Just about everything you just heard was false.
Want to read the resolution, Jeff?
Uh, please, no back and forth. Here. Further, Lauren Sederstrom.
Yes. I followed it very closely, uh, in the, the charter was instituted by our then-mayor, Mr. Carr. They petitioned the court to do that, okay? Well, how can that be false? We can show, you know, I have so many clips from doing the All Around Grant Show. By the way, you can see on the Grant Reporter, a lot of, I'm the canary in the coal mine for, folks. I'm the one that brought the MPCA out with Larry to shut down the Hydravac. Oh, it's, you know, they don't care about our well water. Wake up and smell the coffee, folks. We have some serious problems here. We have kind of a, a do-nothing group that just hands it over to the professionals and, "Oh, what do you got, what do you got this week?" It's ridiculous.
John Rog.
I'm just gonna say that I trust the judgment of the citizens when they vote for things, you know, just the same as when they are going to vote for city council. I trust their judgment. Either, either they'll vote for me, or they won't. So, I trust your judgment and your ability to decide the, the facts.
And that is about all the time we have for questions, although there were quite a few more. So, I suggest you collar your candidates on the way out and...
Do we have closing statements?
Ask them personally. Yes, we will do closing statements now, and we will begin with Jeff Giefer. Uh, Lauren, Lauren Sederstrom.
Okay. This is not the friendly community I moved into 25 years ago to farm. There were no lawsuits and intimidation against residents. 4-H was kicked out of the town hall after four, after 50 years, other groups also. Ordinances have been passed to erode our comp plan. Procedures have changed to limit participation of the minority. The staff prepares ordinance changes without the direction of the council or just the mayor or on their own. There is a failing road policy, and like I said before, woodland acres are 70 homes, but the 12 in Jolier are supposed to fix the road. Okay, contracts over 100 grand have been placed, the consent agenda not allowed to be discussed. Uh, I already talked about the Hydravac. When Sunnybrook neighborhood was flooding and they wanted to discuss it at next month's meeting, Larry and I have attended workshops for the several of the workshop, works, watersheds, and we worked with them to alleviate the flooding. Uh, I also have lobbied at the state Capitol for seven years, several years, to protect Grant's interests. If you want to see more information, go to www dot thegrantreporter, and I do evaluate each meeting after it's done.
Thank you. John Rog.
So, I'd like to take some time to reiterate the differences and approaches you heard this morning. I'm an issues-driven person. I'm going to be respectful to everyone while enforcing the ordinances as written and the comprehensive plan. When you apply these rules fairly to everyone, you don't have to worry about playing favorites or worry about letting one person do something that now becomes the precedent that others will want to do as well. Let's keep Grant country. Let's keep the 10-acre average and 5-acre minimum lot size. Uh, let's make sure we keep our taxes low and the, and, and the great services for our citizens. Let's focus on the issues facing Grant and be respectful for the sake of our next generation because they're watching us, and we need to lead by example. Please vote on November 6th, and please vote for me, John Rog. Thanks.
Thank you. Larry Lanou.
Um, yes, I'd like your continued support. As many people know that I was the founder of the Grant Restoration Project, the Grant Heritage Days Tractor Parade. Uh, I've lobbied at your Capitol to get you state funding for your roads. I mean, I, I've been, I've actually accomplished that. Uh, I will not be bullied by Mr. Carr and Mr. Huber. I will stand up for the rights of the citizens to farm, stable, and protect your rural heritage. That's, I moved out here 30-some years ago. This is not the city that we have. Uh, Mr. Giefer, uh, and Mr. Rog out here, they're recent people, as Mr. Huber, they don't understand the importance and the legacy of our community. I've been here for 38 years, and folks, it's not the same. I will continue fighting for the citizens' right to hunt, farm, and fish in the City of Grant and keep our rural community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Giefer.
Um, thank you again for your time today. Uh, I think it's, um, pretty clear to a lot of people, there's time for some fresh new faces on the city council. Um, I want to work together with you and for you, and work together with the other[1705.09]